All right, it is seven oh two. So it's seven o'clock or seven oh two exactly, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the city council meeting for Minatrista, January eighth, 2024. And first order of business is, oops, I want to remind everybody, including myself, to turn your cellphones on silent so they don't disrupt the meeting. And then second, would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So thank you and welcome, everybody that's here this evening, as well as later on watching on YouTube. So first order, I'd like to make introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Anne McGregor, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy. And then we also have staff this evening here present. We have our director of public works, Gary Peters. Ally Paulus is our director of administration, and then behind her, we have our city clerk, Anne Meyerhoff. And then to my right are Jasper Krugel, who is our city administrator, Brian Grimm, our finance director. And then sitting in for our attorney, Sarah Sensala, this evening, is Joshua Weir. Welcome. And then next to him is, last but certainly not least, our police chief, Paul Falls. So with that, we have an agenda in front of us. Are there any changes to the agenda, any additions? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. I just want to call you Cloudy, Ms. Cloudy. It sounds so cute, good. Anyhow, thank you, that was seconded by Ms. Lacy. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, five oh. Next, we don't have any special presentations, and this evening, we have one member in our audience, we have Margaret Davis here with us this evening, that wish you would like to address the council. Ms. Davis, you'll have to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and for under persons to be heard, as you know, we don't take any action on any requests this evening, so please feel free to come forward.
Well, a big audience tonight. Nice to be here and to see all of you. As you well know, as some of you know, I was on the city council for eight years and enjoyed it most of the time, not all the time. I was going to prepare a joke, but I don't have one. But I could say that maybe the weather is our joke. Who thought it would be a warm weather than snow? I have a special request. I didn't prepare anything specific for tonight, knowing full well that no decision is prepared. I have been to the city council many times to talk with the things I would like to do with my property. I had an unusual experience in my life, or maybe it's also unusual, but on a personal level, $2 million of my retirement account was absconded. I have met with a lawyer regarding it, and it will take a long time to get it at that price. But that puts me in a position which I never thought I'd really be in. I have to do something with my life. We all have to do something with our lives. But mine involves a financial decision. I've lived at my house ranch since 1984. We bought it, built there, developed it, had success in the community and in my personal life. I had decided to stay in that house. One of the ways I can do it is by a division of my 40 acres. The 40 acres I have is, really it turns out to be 37 acres. And I have a very good friend, he purchased some land next to me, who I get to pick up three acres from him. And everybody today are experiencing difficulties financially. I'm not the only one. The United States of America is under despair in many different areas. My background in education, I'm a history major and an economics minor. I've owned six companies, five of them were very successful. I never thought in my wildest dream that I would be in this position. Turns out, as we all are creatures of the habit, I like to stay in my house. And to do that involves a, if I could do a division, a split of 20 acres.
So Ms. Davis, I do understand, or I believe that you are on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken, for the planning commission coming up the end of January, is that correct, Mr.?
That is correct, on the 29th.
On the 29th. So, and then, so it'll go in front of the planning commission, the planning commission will hear your case, if you will, and then it will come back to the council, and the council will then also have another opportunity, and you would have another opportunity to address us at that time. We're not going to make any decision here tonight, and you would have a little more time after the planning commission meeting as well. So you'd have two more opportunities to address the council.
That's great.
Yeah.
I brought this tonight.
Okay, if you want to hand that to the chief, and then he can make copies or pass it on to the?
We have the copies, not really, unless you want some tonight.
We have, I believe that's the same thing you have in your application, correct?
Yes, the same thing.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, and that'll be going to the planning commission as well as to the council afterwards as well, so.
Well, okay, for some of you, you haven't seen it.
But Ms. Davis, I have to, I'm going to have to stop you tonight, because under persons to be heard, we do have a limit of three minutes, and I've given you more than that.
There's so many here tonight.
I know, I know it is, but because you're going to have another opportunity, in fact, you're going to have two more opportunities to show us what you want to do and to tell us about your story. So we're not, we're not stopping you from doing that, you're going to go through the process, we're going to hear you again at the planning commission and again at the council meeting after that. So I think it'll come to the council meeting on February 5th, I believe, if it goes to, or maybe it'll be?
It'll likely be the 21st.
The 21st, so you're going to go to the, of February, so you're going to go to the planning commission on the 29th, then it's going to come back to the council on February 21st, or 20?
Sorry, 21st.
21st.
The 29th of January.
To the planning commission, yes. And then the 21st comes back here to the council, and I'll give you more than three minutes at that time.
Oh, thank you, Lisa.
Okay, all right. And we, did you state your, I'm sorry, did you state your address for the record?
I wrote it in, but I'll state 24, 9455 County Road 26.
Okay.
I just wanted to see, one more minute of stuff.
Okay, one more minute.
First of all, like you, I'm a family, I don't change my address, and here's Danny's voice.
Okay, we, that's, thank you. Cute, okay.
This ring is so loud.
Yeah, thank you, those are cute, very cute.
This is my voice.
Okay, yeah.
Eight times grand, you have to.
That's wonderful, that's wonderful.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
I brought it here, please.
Oh, all right, thank you.
I would be more at home.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret.
All right.
I'm so glad I didn't prepare a joke.
Maybe next time, okay, next time.
But here's a joke.
Okay.
You never know what you're going to get. Nice to meet everybody who I haven't met before, and nice to you.
All right, thank you.
Good home, thankfully.
All right, next, we're going to move on to consent agenda items. I would like to pull a couple, number D and E, is there any others?
Yeah, I want to pull E.
Okay, I'm sorry, E, I wanted to pull H.
You want to pull H, okay.
H as well.
I want to pull E.
Okay, so D, E, and H we'll pull, any other ones? All right, with that, the consent agenda items include then, number A, approve our work session meeting minutes from December 4th, 2023, approve city council regular meeting minutes from December 4th, 2023, C is approve our pay equity implementation report, F is approve our MOU with Local 49, revising probationary language and earned sick and safe time, and G is a resolution approving claims. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, F, and G?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, four oh. So I'm going to take the, the only reason I pulled the, approve the letter of resignation from our police sergeant, Josh Thompson, I just wanted to say publicly, I'm sorry to see him go, he's been a great asset to our police department, and if he were still here, I know officially his last day is the 15th, I believe, or 14th, but he's taking some vacation time, if he were still here working, I would definitely want to recognize him and say thank you for his years of service to our community. Like I said, he's been a great asset to our police department, he will be greatly missed. I do wish him the best of luck, and in the future, I know this is a great opportunity for him going over to the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, so the best of luck to him, if you want to pass that on to him, if you should talk to him, greatly appreciate it. So unfortunately, we do still have to approve his letter of resignation, is there a motion to approve his letter of resignation? Thank you, Mr. Vickery, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Next, approve our city council appointments and designations.
Yes, I would like to pull that. I have enjoyed my time at the Gillespie Center, and it's been very rewarding, but I am looking to pass that on, possibly to Claudia, and so that will require a change on that agenda.
Thank you, well, I would like to say, thank you for doing that, for being the representative to the Gillespie Center, I will say you've done an excellent job, Anne.
Thank you very much.
I have really appreciated everything that you've done, you've been there, you've done an excellent job, and fully support you in all of your decisions and representation of the city, thank you very, very much. Claudia will have some big shoes to fill, if you are willing to do that. With that, could I also make one other minor thing? Claudia, would it, would you be in favor of maybe handing over the WCC to Jasper and I, we can kind of tag team, or you and I could tag team, I know you can't always make it because of your business and your other commitments, if you'd like to tag team, maybe we could designate both of us?
I would love to tag team, I speak with Betsy a lot.
Right.
And I'm, we talk all the time, so I'd love to stay on with that as well, and plus I run a business in that community, so yes, it's important to me, and I'm also across the street from the Gillespie Center, and I'm over there quite a bit, so I don't think it's that difficult. The only time I have a little bit of a problem is the first week of the month, but, you know, I think I can.
Yeah, okay, so then we'll just make those two minor changes, Claudia and myself for the Gillespie, for the WCC, and then we'll change Claudia to the Gillespie Center. Okay? Any other, other than that, I think we're good to go? So is there a motion then to approve the designation for the appointments for 2024 with those changes?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. So next, the other reason, so next, I pulled this polling place change real quick, a couple of things, one, in our packet, it lists the Minatrista Baptist Church located in St. Bonnie, I want to just make, clarify this, it is actually in Minatrista. Of course, many, as you know, Minatrista doesn't have any zip code, we use zip codes from surrounding communities, in fact, we have five different zip codes in our community, so it's confusing at times, because it may say St. Bonnie's zip code, but it's physically in Minatrista. The other reason I wanted to point this out is just so it's on record, and so the public, if they're watching, we, this is a new polling place, we were at the Freshwater Church in St. Bonnie, which is confusing, but now it's going to be at the Minatrista Baptist Church, which is in Minatrista, and it's right, it's right on basically Halsted, Highland, basically in Highland, so, thank you. So in our packet, it said St. Bonnie, I just thought we should change that to Minatrista, and just making it known that we will have this as our new, one of our precincts in Minatrista, so. Any other questions? Ally, do you need to add anything?
No, communication will be sent to the residents within the precinct, so.
Good, okay, so with that, I'll make a motion to approve the new polling place, adding the Minatrista Baptist Church in Minatrista as our new polling place instead of the Freshwater Church. Is there a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, five oh. So next, we move on to our business items, and that's consider approval, consider the approval of LES 473 Labor Union Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. This is our last labor agreement that we had to renew in 2023, that expired at the end of 2023. So I'll give a little background about this, this is our CSO group. We had a series of meetings throughout the year, kind of leading up to what was a mediation event, so I think it was the first time we've had mediation here in quite some time, I'm not sure when the last time was.
2010, it's been a while.
It's been a while, so, so it was a good exercise, you know, I've been, I've been through it one other time in another situation, but, so basically, what we, our offer that we made to the group was rejected, and we weren't able to come to terms, that's what we did, mediation. So the mediation event, I think it was, took about five hours or so to get it done, and just the mediation, just to make it clear, it's, I forget the name of the group, Bureau of Mediation Services in Minnesota, it's free, it just takes our time, you know, everybody else's time, if we have legal counsel involved, their time, that type of thing, but we were able to come to terms very, very close to what we originally offered. So the contract, the changes, just in summary, this is a three-year contract, the previous one was a two-year, we did that to match up with the current LES contracts that we have with the supervisors and the peace officers. The other, next thing was Article 12, we've increased that family contribution for health insurance, the cafeteria, or the cafeteria plan, from 1,300 to 1,500, we've done that for all employees, including the unions too, for 2024, and there's a re, insurance reopener in there for 2025 and 2026, that's just in there, if we make any changes for non-union people, then it just automatically reopens, we've seen MLUs for that in the past. We have the Article 13 reflects a total of $525 or $175 per year for like, uniform allowance, that matches up with what the increase was for the other groups that we have. Article 17 included the addition of Juneteenth, which is now a state holiday, so we've included that in all the contracts, and Article 20 was really the basis for the mediation. So you can see on here, we have a, we have what was approved, that we tentatively agreed on per agreement by city council, was a 14.5% increase in 2024, 3% in 2025, and a 2% in 2026. So if you add all that up, you're at 19.5% over the three years, our initial offer was at 19%. So it's a little bit more front-loaded than what we had originally, but, you know, it, so it costs a little bit more, but it's pretty dang close at the end of the contract where we're at. So that whole exercise, additional half percent is what the outcome was. So what we're recommending, and Personnel Committee is aware of this, and they're recommending this too, they're here, but, is to approve this contract for the three-year term, and as, with the, with the changes that are summarized here. There's a redline version and a clean version of the, of the agreement too, if there's any other questions, I'll entertain them.
How much does it impact the budget that we just passed? Is that?
It, it won't, so this is a very, very small part, it's two people, so it's only two people, so very, very minimal impact.
It's, yeah, pretty, pretty immaterial, I don't want to make light of it, but it's, it's not a major impact.
Yeah, in the overall grand scheme of things, yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion then to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, LES 473 Labor Union Agreement, I know you were coming out with that, so okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, and then next, approve the MOU with LES 116, 343, and 473 regarding the earned sick and safe time.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council, before you are three memos of understanding, one for each of the groups, they're very similar, the intent is to implement this E S S T, this earned sick and safe time policy that we're required to implement. Each group, so we have a non-union group, we have our public works group, and we have our LES group, and unfortunately, every one of them has a little bit different E S S T policy, because they're all kind of different, the non-union, we have PTO, the LES has vacation sick, and public works has vacation sick. So we've had, we had a lot of back and forth between the LES group and the city about the way they wanted it implemented, we worked with them, it is an employer right to implement it how we feel, but to circumvent an additional mediation event potentially, we worked with them, and the group, I would say, kind of compromised a little bit too, because we weren't thinking of the way that they're, we're implementing it, it wasn't one of the defined three ways that we would implement. So in summary, what's going to happen if this is approved is, existing sick bank, a certain portion, 80 hours, will be designated as E S S T time on January 1st of 2024, they'll be able to use it for the E S S T purposes outlined by the Department of Labor and Industry.
It's four, how many, you said 80 hours?
It's 80 hours, it's 80 hours. And we, and I can get into the reason why we did that, we could do 48, but we did 80, because the max is 80, and if we had to track the 48 and the usage, and then the year-to-year balance tracking, it's somewhat of a limitation of our payroll software to be able to do that, it'd be a lot of manual tracking, we really worked with Ally and Brian and Angie in payroll to make sure, you know, we didn't want to have this policy create a bunch of work for our staff too, so. So what it is, is they're designating 80 hours of their current sick bank as E S S T, if an employee, let's say they're new or newer, they're going to still designate 80 hours of the sick, but the sick might, sick bank might actually go negative, which they'll then earn that back. They can't use their sick if it's negative, so they'd have to use E S S T, and we'll manage that year-to-year, it's a little bit easier that way. So somewhat contentious a little bit between the groups, but I think we were able to make, work through it, this is actually, I think internally, we're like, well, if we would've, if we would've thought the staff would have been okay with designating sick time for E S S T, you know, that was a little kind of hybrid option that isn't technically outlined as okay, but if the employee's okay with it, then it's fine. So that's what's in front of you in a nutshell, to be able to implement this thing that we kind of already have a policy for, but we're forced to do it. So I'll entertain any questions, Ally had a big part in this as well, you know, we brought in our legal counsel quite a bit with this too, regarding the side issue, so.
Just the one, or just main clarification I would make is that all, it's just reclassifying parts of existing banks, whether it's vacation, sick, or PTO, this is an additional benefit for anybody, so.
It's not additional, right, right.
So whether they're choosing, it's three different ways it's being split, it's just reallocating from current buckets to this state mandated earned sick and safe and sick time, which basically was more targeted at places, I think, that weren't offering their employees earned sick time, or sick time, you know, time away for various reasons, so.
That's a good point, I didn't, I didn't mention this, it's in the memo, but they, no more, no more time, it's no additional time, the 960 hours that the max is, that's capped, that's still there, it's just 880 hours is sick, 80 hours is E S S T. So it's no different as far as the benefit goes.
Vacation sick, however it's being implemented, there's no additional.
Yeah, yeah.
Severance is the same.
Severance is the same, it's the same, it's just the way it's kind of packaged.
And I will, I did ask Jasper if the legislature makes changes up to the policy, it's easy to go back to how it was.
Well, so we think.
Yes.
System-wise, it was easy to go back.
Yeah, yeah, system-wise, right.
Relocating. It's what we're hoping for.
Right, right. So if you're okay with that, any other questions? All right, so if you're okay with that, then is there a motion to approve the MOU with LES 116, 343, 473 regarding the earned sick and safe time?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, five oh. That concludes our business items, so we'll move on to our administrative items, staff?
I do have one, and this is very recent, we have settled in on a strategic planning date of the 22nd, February 22nd, at 12:30 PM. So I think that'll work out, I think everybody will be able to be in attendance, so we'll schedule a three-hour session, working on the survey for the topics, if you could fill that out and get that back to me, then we'll develop an agenda and we'll go from there, and I think we should be able to get it all in in three hours, if we need to schedule another session, we will. So that kind of will provide the framework for what we work on for the next couple of years, so.
Okay, February 22nd, 12:30 PM here?
In the council chambers, correct.
Okay, all right, and then work session for next meeting, do we want to maybe post or cancel that?
Yep, I think we're going to, we don't have any items on there, I think we're going to cancel that, we'll still have our regular meeting starting at 7.
At 7 o'clock, so, and Ally, I'm assuming, or Anne, you'll post that then?
Yep.
That it's been canceled, okay, anything else?
The only other thing I have is the senate bonding tour, we have a presentation on the 17th that we're going to be presenting, similar to the one for the House, so we'll hopefully get the House, we'll get the Senate, and we'll get the governor to, I'll dedicate us, dedicate some funds to Minatrista, so we'll see what happens. The legislative session that really got a key in on, it'll likely be around April and May, where we'll find out.
Yeah, we won't find out sooner. Okay, I'll start off with council reports, so just FYI, maybe we could add this to the next meeting, is the GFOA award that we received?
Yes.
I got an email today that we received that again, and that's the award for accounting and financial.
Financial reporting, yeah, basically a comprehensive annual financial report.
Right, so congratulations to you and your, your team, but I'd like to just add it under special presentations, if you would.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was going to say, we at least got to have a council meeting in a couple of weeks, or just the regular meeting, because we don't get an award, or once a year we get one.
We get an award, I know, so, so we'll add that, and then, so the meetings that I've been to and some of the things, so we did have a post-holiday tree lighting and meeting, we kind of went over the, the little glitches that we had, which were actually kind of funny, but anyhow, and certain things, and if you have any ideas of things that you'd like to see, or any ideas, please give those to Ally or Jasper, if we can make it even better than this year, that would be great, as you know, we're, it's December 5th this year, I think, so keep that in, in mind. And then I also attended on December 11th, I attended the roundtable discussion with Representative Myers, that was hosted at the city hall in, let's see, Minnetonka Beach, and Jasper attended as well. Most of that discussion rotated around, or was around the Highway 7 corridor coalition, there was the brand-new representative for this district from Mindott, which was good to have him there, but, and so he's aware of the coalition, he said he'd likely be very willing to participate, so there's certain low-hanging fruit items that we'd like to see done immediately or sooner than later, and he was very much in favor of that, rather than some kind of very huge project that would take years and years to develop, and I think we're all on the same page, we really want some of the safety issues addressed on Highway 7, so we'll be moving forward with that. The next meeting, the coalition meeting, we'll pro, we don't have a date set, but it'll probably be end of February. but it'll probably be end of February, end of January, sometime in February as well. I also attended the Northwest League. That was on December 13th, and again, Jasper joined me for that. It was a special meeting with mayors and administrators from different cities. We had an opportunity to meet some of the very, very new administrators, some just hours into their, into their new position, have others, one other one, just a couple of weeks. So it was good to meet all of them, a good networking opportunity. And then also, both Jasper and I attended the West Tonka Rotary Lunch at the Lafayette Club. Again, a good opportunity to meet different people in the community, as well as be a participant of the greater community and supportive of them. And then coming up, as Jasper mentioned, we have that Senate bonding tour. I will be attending that and memorizing the speech, I think. And then, and then tomorrow, I'll be attending the Park Commission meeting, and then also the next Northwest League is this week, and that, that discussion is going to be around the Met Council Transportation, so I'll bring back some information regarding that. And then I'll also be attending the Planning Commission meeting on the 29th of January. So that's all I have. Any questions? All right, with that, any other reports? All right, I know it's been...
I have one.
Yes.
I met with Betsy Brady, and I attended the holiday party for the West Tonka Community and Commerce Organization at Allen Alph, it's very lovely. And what they're focused, they had a meeting today where they discussed their big fundraiser for the Special Olympics, the Polar Plunge, it's at the end of this month at Surfside Beach. They're meeting prior to the plunge at Surfside Grill, I guess at about 11:45 to gear up. Their goal is to raise $65,000. They've already raised about $11,000, but it's coming up, so you know, sponsor someone if you can. And again, it's for the Special Olympics. What else did I want to tell you about them? Oh, they have a speaker coming at their next meeting on the 21st, I believe. No, I'm sorry, it is not the 21st, it's, I'll have to double-check then. Someone is coming to, it's the, I'm so sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Oh, distinguished speaker, he is with the Minnesota Small Business Community or something like that. And so he's talking about tax laws that are going to be changing into 2024 that will affect small businesses, and that will be at the Gillespie Center. So if you want more information on that, I'll let you know, and that's really all I have.
Good, thank you. All right, so that concludes our meeting and reports. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, we are adjourned. I think that was a record.
Very good.
7:35.